All right, it's five o'clock. We can get Vice Mayor Dalton still muted. There we go. All right, I think we've got everybody. Commissioner LaComte, Jano, Vice Mayor Dalton, Commissioner Phillips. All right, let's go ahead and get started then if it's black, if everybody's ready. All right, so our first item on our work session agenda today is the appointment of Karen Ziv to the BZA. Is Karen Ziv with us?
She is. She's here.
Well, nice to meet you, Karen.
Hello, sorry for the road noise. I'm working out of a Starbucks today.
Oh, I miss those days. Well, thank you for joining us today. I'm excited to meet you.
Thanks for being here, Karen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can, Ms. Ziv is the only one who has submitted an application so far for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I had a Zoom call with her a few weeks ago and we just talked about why she wanted to be involved. And she's lived in Red Bank just over a year and just wants to be more involved and engaged in the town's governance. And I can, I can maybe let her introduce herself a little more to you guys now if that would be better. And then I can introduce her at the regular meeting or whichever would be better for everyone. If anyone has any feelings about it.
Neither does me.
Okay, she, she is currently working for a nonprofit out of California. She volunteers with the St. Catherine's Women's Shelter and has worked in another nonprofit capacity and is currently studying to become an accountant. So I think she would really give really a good perspective of like cost benefit analysis of upholding zoning rules and also, also understanding, as she said in her application, that variances sometimes benefit neighborhoods. So I think she just will bring a really good perspective to Board of Zoning Appeals, which hasn't met in over two years. And she understands that but feels passionate about being more engaged and involved. So I'm very happy to recommend her. So if anybody has any questions, go ahead.
I was just wondering, Ms. Ziv, what makes you, I mean, I think Vice Mayor Dalton addressed some of these things. What makes you interested in, in working with the city government? I think you, you know, it's a, it's a rare bird. Who, who wants to volunteer for a job like this? So I'd just love to hear it a little bit from your perspective. What made you, what inspired you to apply?
Um, so actually, I've been wanting to be more involved since I moved to Chattanooga from Florida about a year and a half ago. And then I settled in Red Bank itself and I realized it's its own town. And I thought Chattanooga is a little much, but Red Bank has a feel of an actual neighborhood, even, I mean, even with its own little mini neighborhoods within the city. And it's something, as Stephanie said, where I can be more involved. Like I said, I work at a nonprofit. I volunteer a couple places. I just feel that I've been very fortunate in life and I'd like to be able to be of service to others on many levels. And this, this is one way. And I know that the Board of Zoning Appeals doesn't have a huge demand. I mean, I work full time and I go to school part time. So I think it's a great way to learn a little bit more about how a city is run so that I can be of use in a bigger way later on when I have more free time.
Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Ziv?
You ever spend any time on any boards or anything, Karen?
Back in Florida, I was the vice president of a small triathlon. It's a sports club. And, excuse me, it was a 501(c)(4), not (c)(3). And as the vice president, I was responsible, unfortunately, the financials were a big mess. So I was responsible for helping get them in order with our new treasurer, making sure that we had budgets, helping craft a vision of where we wanted the club to go forward. This was a club, it was pretty small. It was only about 200 members. But we were definitely engaged in the community, worked with, we had, we held a race for people who lived in the city. And so there was a lot of outreach with the police, the fire department, the local YMCA to try to get people involved and to, again, just, just bring something to the community. So that was a lot of what I did. And being a technical person, I'm a web developer for a living. I was able to also help us work with our social media presence and everything to craft our, craft our message and share the vision. And again, I'm sorry about the, the road noise. The internet at the, at the house I'm staying at is very bad. So, um, so it definitely gave me a taste for being part of a bigger thing than just, just my job or just going to school.
Excellent. Do we have any more questions for Ms. Ziv before the regular meeting? All right, if there are no more questions, we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Citizen Wade Cook would like to make a presentation to the board about pickleball courts. Mr. Cook, are you with us? No, do we not have Mr. Cook?
He is here. He's unmuted now.
Okay.
Okay, I think I'm kind of new at the Zoom, so.
Oh, I love your background.
The people are frozen. Okay, I'm not going to take a lot of your time. I'm just going to present a little proposal to you. And before I do that, I want to say thanks to the city of Red Bank, Tim Thornberry and Public Works, and especially Greg Tate. In the previous two years when I've called him about lights being out. Red Bank, I called him one Friday and Monday morning we were out there playing and a bucket truck showed up. They were out there fixing the lights. I asked him about relining the current courts. And within a week or two, the, you know, new lines were the ones worn out. They were repainted and just a great job all around. So before we even get started with that, I just had to put a shout out for the Public Works and the great job they do. But what I wanted to just propose and suggest actually is just taking one of the tennis courts. I'm sure you saw the proposal I sent and there's the three courts that are together and then the two separate ones at 90 degrees angle. I'd like to suggest taking one of those courts, which measures about 60 by 120. And that's Tracy flipping the pages for me. That's exactly right. And placing three pickleball courts within that one court. You can actually fit four if, if you wanted to do four of them. The more the merrier. Just puts less space between each court. Let's see, and I'm just going to go through a few pickleballs played with a little paddle and a ball. It's like a wiffle ball. And it's, it's pretty, it's pretty much like ping pong and tennis put together. It's played by a variety of age groups. There's young people that play. We've played with UTC students who came out and play. And we play with folks all the way up to, I know one's 81 years old and they're good. The, the game, it's not all about power. There's a lot of strategy involved. There's men that play. There's women that play. And primarily, it's played as a doubles game. So you'll typically see four people on a court. And presently, there's a good group of people that play there. In fact, through, even through this entire winter, on Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings around eight or nine to 10 o'clock, you'll usually see a group of players out there playing. I think it was about a week ago on Wednesday, there was nine, 10 players playing. So it's just, uh, it's a sport that's really increasing in popularity with the number of courts and municipalities putting in these pickleball courts. There's been some, there's courts in Dalton, there's courts in College Dale, there's courts in Cleveland, and these are all dedicated pickleball courts. What we have there is fine. I mean, you can play with those and it's better than nothing. But the, the net between tennis and pickleball is a different height. The ones we have up there, you really can't adjust them. So we have one gentleman who has a hook and he'll adjust them for pickleball. But I'm sure when the tennis players show up, they don't adjust it back up for tennis. So there are, are some differences. And presently, when we play, if, if a ball goes past you, which it typically does, it's probably a good 20 feet, maybe even more to get to the fence line to retrieve your ball. So what I'm just proposing is force the look to take just one of those five tennis courts and put three pickleball courts, maybe even four in there, just to help the utilization factor. Because presently, in the spring, on a nice spring day or some, some days, you'll see we're all five courts with tennis players, but typically it's not. And if the pickleball crowd keeps showing up and they take up three of the pickleball, you know, three of the tennis courts, that's just going to leave two tennis courts for other folks to play tennis. There, there has been one time this past summer where my wife Lucretia and I did show up to play pickleball just to practice and we did grab one of those three courts. And they were having a tennis tournament. But the tennis tournament, I don't know where they were from. They were definitely younger folks. They, they definitely worked with us. They didn't kick us off the one court. So they were happy playing with four tennis courts. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if the high schools use that or not. I haven't noticed them, you know. So Tracy, maybe we could turn to the next page. And that's just showing, there's a little graph there at the, at the top left. It's showing you the total courts. And this is from the US APA, which is the, United States actually has a pickleball association. And it's just a graph of the courts from 2014. There were 93, 100 courts for pickleball. And by 2017, there was 21,000. So if you just look at the court, that blue graph, it'll show you the trajectory of how many of these courts are going in and, and the overall enthusiasm for it. As the US APA points out too, it's one of the country's fastest growing sports. I mean, there's a pro tour. There's people in, typically in Florida. There's, you know, 80 court places where people go to play. And there's a good group here, here in town. The bottom picture shows you back in October, there was three courts of local players at Red Bank Park, which was 12 people. And there was probably two or three of us still waiting to go out on the court. So it's, it's pretty popular. And it, it's a really healthy activity. Gets you out, you're running, you know, it, you typically play for an hour or two. And it's, it's a social activity where if you ever see these people playing, they're having a lot of fun. There's a lot of jokes going on. It's not too dog eat dog out there. Although it can be at times and there's some very good players here in Red Bank. I will tell you that. So Tracy, maybe we can just go to the next. And this is just a, uh, something I came up with. And I know it's not totally correct, but it will just give you an idea of the cost savings the city could experience by just going with a transition from one tennis court to pickleball courts. Typically, a new pickleball court standalone by itself costs on average 25,000 to 30,000 to construct one court. So if you extrapolate, extrapolate that out, three courts, maybe 75, probably more than that, 85,000 on the conversion. And this was just ballparking it based on the equipment I found online, the paint, blah, blah, all that kind of stuff. And a total guess at labor, you're looking at maybe three converted courts of about $8,500. Now, I do know there's a fellow pickleball player, Diane and Mike Pendergrass, who play on those courts. And Mike has a friend who works in the field where they actually put in competition athletic services, play, playing fields. And I think he talked to the gentleman and he said his best guess was probably about $15,000 to $20,000 to convert the one court to three or four pickleball courts. So mine was just a pie in the sky number. It's probably about twice that. But overall, you're still looking at a cost savings of, huge cost savings as opposed to taking land someplace and saying, we want to put in three or four new pickleball courts. College Dale did put in four pickleball courts five, six, seven years ago. And they're very nice. If you ever go there at the, back behind the city hall, they're in the spring, summer, fall. They're constantly in use. There's a good crowd that plays there too. Like I said, other municipalities are putting them in. Cleveland opened up a park. Dalton's opened up a park. And Chattanooga proper does not have a outside pickleball court with, with more than one court. I know one or two courts where you can go play and they're, they're also tennis pickleball courts. So I just think it would be a great idea if Red Bank would pursue this and take a stab at making that change. I think it would draw a lot of people here. And it could also bring people who spend a little money. They may go over to Bread and Butter. They may go be caffeinated and grab some coffee. It's a, it's not going to hurt the, our Red Bank. Let's put it that way. So I'd just like to thank you for giving me this time and take this into consideration. And hopefully, we can get it done.
So much, Mr. Cook. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Cook about this proposal?
Of course I got questions. You know, uh, you know, our, our jobs as commissioners is to make the life better, better for all of the citizens of Red Bank. And how, how do you propose, is there any funding there for this? Is there any private funding at all that along with this or is this all for?
Are you asking me that, Pete?
Yes, but yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Wait.
I mean, I don't see, you know, any private funding. We can put a tournament on once it's done and gather up some money that way. But I, I, I know College Dale had Mr. Key write the check for their courts. You know, I don't think, Red Bank probably has a Mr. McKee in the area who's ready to do that. But for, for the amount of money that, that it would take to just convert one court versus build, building, you know, an entire new facility, I'm, I'd, I'd like to see what the budget is for the Red Bank, you know, parks and rec. If, if something can't come out of there to help do it. It's an underutilized facility right now.
Well, I'm not going to argue that. I'm not a, I'm not going to argue that. But you know, of course, it's kind of one of those things that I'd like, I'd like to see some skin in the game too. So I'm kind of getting that, you know, so.
Yeah, I think you just have to look at it as it's an investment into future returns. Because I think if you would build it and you start attracting some more folks, then you're going to, you're going to draw more people to Red Bank. It's another plus for Red Bank versus sitting back and letting other communities, you know, do these things. And then you're a follower. I, I, I think Red Bank should, it would just be good for Red Bank.
I'd like to redirect that question to Mr. Thornberry. Do we have the funding that would be required in the current parks budget for this project this year? Or would this need to be part of the discussion for next year's budget?
It would have to be part of the next year's discussion for the budget. We didn't have that kind of money in this year's budget for the Kids Corner Park. So definitely, we have looked at, got a, got a couple of quotes. And as Mr. Cook talked about, they're ranging from 15,000 to 18,000 dollars for three courts. So definitely, we would have to put out RFPs or Qs on it and get pricing. And then you guys would have to approve that expense because it's over 10 grand, so.
And, and, and Mr. Cook, so we'd have to move the nets and then repaint? Is that basically what you're saying?
Yeah, basically repaint, you know, the, the one section of courts. And, and really take up the tennis net and pole that you have there, purchase new poles and nets and, and repaint.
Okay, all right. Well, I want you also to know I'm not against it. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to look at it, if that makes sense.
Sure. If we could, if we could develop any kind of public-private partnership or find a sponsor to assist with the project, that would be great. I definitely see it as being within the realm of, you know, what the city can, can do.
And I'm also looking for positive press too. If we can do something for positive press, I like the 8,000 a lot more than 18, of course. But, you know, yeah, it's pretty expensive press, but, you know.
Tim, if this is going to have to be part of the future budget discussions, I wonder if there might be any grant opportunities that would assist in the funding for a project like this?
Yeah, I mean, I can look into it for some recreational grants in, in that aspect. So let's see if we can get some funding to help out on it.
I know we didn't get it last year, but I know you applied for the BCBS Healthy Places Grant. Something along those lines. Or be, I mean, might be possible to reach out to BCBS because they have a lot of health and fitness initiatives.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always looking for grants to help us out on different things, so.
We can add that to our, to our project list.
You know, I'll check, you know, maybe there's other places to dig up some money. You never know. Maybe the Pickleball Association puts out money. Who knows? But like I said, there's some other folks, you know, here in town that are involved and they, they may have some ideas. So in the meantime, time, I'll, I'll look for that and see.
Well, and, and you know, I have seen a lot more activity over at the tennis courts, but I don't know if they're pickleballers or tennis quarters, you know. So, you know, so it might very well be your, your, your associations that's out there giving it the, 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 the use, because I like seeing that stuff used, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was just there last week and I saw two sets of people playing pickleball while I was at the Kids Corner Park with my son. So it was the first time I had seen it, but it looked fun. And like he said, everybody was really socializing, having a good time together.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good sport. It really is. And like I said, it's increasing in popularity, you know, every, every year. So, I, I mean, we're thankful for what we have. It's just, I, I think if you did this, you'd find a lot more people, you know, visiting the area. I think you'd get, you'd be drawing people out of Chattanooga proper to come up to Red Bank to play.
I have one more question for you, Mr. Cook. You mentioned that the court can accommodate four pickleball courts, but you proposed three. Is there any reason that you have a preference for three over four?
No, but I'd say, well, I did that for just cost saving. I'd say you go for four.
Okay. If you were going through the trouble of restriping, it, it would be, you know, worthwhile to try to maximize the outcome. And then we could, you know, increase our total number of courts overall by, by three.
Right.
It's like a 50% increase, so.
No, no, I thought four, four sounds good.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Cook?
Good.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cook.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thanks for giving me this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So next on the work session agenda, we have the resolution, upcoming resolution for a vote for the, regarding the invocation. Do we have any discussion or comments on that?
I like it. I think it looks good.
Any other comments on that item before we move on?
Well, you know, that they, it was just, I, I like it that where we have our clergy is involved in our meetings. If they, uh, and for the invocation, I'm, I'm totally good with it.
Okay.
I like it. Arnie or Tim, whoever saw fit to do that, put in that we could also have our chaplain from our police department and fire department available.
Yeah, that is a nice touch. I've, I've heard of other cities that have their fire chaplain lead their prayer from time to time, so.
It's a good move.
All right, well, if there are no further comments on that item, do we have any other business items not on the agenda that anybody wants to discuss?
I, I do. I just, I wanted to bring up the fact that I had asked him, the city manager, a few weeks ago to put discussion of a formal RFP procedure on an upcoming agenda. And I included like a rough draft, multi-step approach that would allow for things like multiple community feedback opportunities, formal presentations by the developers, review and recommendation by the planning commission, et cetera. And I'm still waiting on a status update on a rough draft from the city attorney. So I just wanted to check in with Mr. Stoltz and see when he would have a draft for us to review and discuss.
I'll, I'll share with you that I have not done it yet and I will redouble my efforts to do so. And when would be a prediction, but shall we say before the next meeting?
Okay, thank you very much.
I apologize for not having gotten to it yet.
Quite all right. I, I felt like it was appropriate to, to have something, a discussion at least about getting something like that in place, especially with the impending RFP on the old middle school property. So thank you for doing that.
I've got, I've got a question and maybe I'm just missing the boat right here. On the survey that we did for the recycling, how did that all turn out?
That survey is still live.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Thornberry and I discussed leaving it open maybe until the budget discussions begin in April and closing it then, just to allow for the maximum opportunity for citizens to complete the survey and give that feedback, so we can have as complete a picture as possible. Now, we have received over 500, closer to 600 responses already. So that's going quite well so far.
Okay. We don't have any results of where we're at right now?
Um, well, the preliminary, I mean, the results are still pending as long as we leave it open. But the preliminary results show a 90%, five out of five support rating for the policy in general and an 89.3% support rate for the price of $3 a month per household. So the results are coming in pretty favorable in favor of curbside recycling. All right, I did have another item I wanted to bring up on the agenda. Are.
I know something. Not everybody get, a lot of people don't do Facebook. Is there any way that we can advertise that so people can take advantage of the, you know, the survey that, that happened?
It's on the website.
Yeah, it's on the city website and we always mention it in the meetings. I'm open to suggestions if there's another way you'd like to publicize it.
Maybe, maybe community news, maybe an article in Chattanooga.com. Most everybody reads one or the other of those. So I, I'd like to get a little more, I'm for it, don't get me wrong. But I'd like to get a little more input from, from more citizens. I mean, you know, we've got several thousand and 500 is only the numbers that we've got. I'd like to get it out there and even if we had to do a billboard. I mean, something that we can get it out there instead of just on our website, Facebook. What do you think about that? What do you think about that, Tim?
I can look at other options.
Okay.
All right. So our executive order from the Tennessee state governor that allows us to conduct these meetings virtually expires at the end of February, unless it's extended. And as far as I know, it has not been extended up until the state. Of course, you can do it anytime, but for the time being, we have to plan on returning to in-person meetings starting in March, and that'd be our next meeting. We'll have to be back to in-person. So I wanted to run by each of you and find out who all has a portable device, like a laptop or a tablet or even a smartphone, who could bring it with them to the in-person meeting in order to set it up in front of them, and we'd be able to broadcast on Zoom, simulcast on Zoom. But while we're meeting in person, people can attend virtually if they don't yet feel comfortable coming in person because of COVID, or if their schedules or lifestyle prohibits.
Yeah, I have a laptop.
Okay. I have a laptop as well. Arnie, you have a laptop?
A laptop, and a, and a smartphone.
Okay. Commissioner LaCombe, do you have a portable device?
Yes, I've got a laptop that I'm on right now.
Oh, you do? Great. And Commissioner Juno, what about you? I think we might have lost Ms. Juno.
Looks like she's frozen up.
Yeah.
I have, I have a, a battery-powered to back this, so.
Perfect.
I'll be good.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Juno, we froze up right when you were about to answer. Do you have a portable device?
I do. I have a, a computer app and a cellphone. How long are you proposing to do this, Holly?
I would say until, until the vaccine reaches the critical point that we are no longer requiring social distancing and mask wearing. That would be a prudent time to continue giving our citizens the option to attend virtually for their own safety, even if we're not allowed to. It may, that would probably be later. It would probably be most of this year. I'm sorry, Commissioner Juno, you're, you're freezing up.
We can, we can, we can do it temporarily. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then if everyone would be all right with continuing with bringing their device with them to the next in-person meeting in March, it would be greatly appreciated.
Very good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, one question. Will we be back at city hall, or will we be back at the community center?
We'll be, we'll be at city hall.
Yeah, unfortunately.
There's no, we don't have a center at the community.
Exactly.
The, the, the community center is not set up with Wi-Fi or internet access, which we'll have to have to do this zone, so we'll have to go back to the commission chambers until we can get that installed. And we're looking at that in the upcoming budget year.
Okay. All right. Any other business not on the agenda before we adjourn? Okay. Well, if that is everything for now, then we can take a break, and I will see everyone back at 6:00.
All right.
See you then.
Thank you.